Hey, sports fans, it's Greg Medford. Man, we're, I was just getting ready to rip into my other show and here we are. Welcome to the Greg Medford Show. I'm your host, Greg. Uh, we've had an interesting run in Arizona and um, I have a bunch of thoughts about it. I've got our guest today has been a right-hand man to one of the city council members, one of the conservative last bastions of conservatism. Conservatism is getting uh, the problem with conservatism is it's, it's, um, it's fragile and we believe in ourselves too much to game the system. And so we spend our time crafting these good arguments and having this great argument for changing hearts and minds and having this great argument about being conservatives. And the other side, you notice they don't even argue anymore. They say you're a stupid racist and they've decided, and here's what's interesting. This is like, um, you know, in World War II, uh, when, when the boys started really engaging the Japanese, you can't call them Japanese. You have to give them a pejorative or disrespectful kind of, you have to call them nips or you have to, in Vietnam, you had to call them zipper heads and towel heads in the Middle East. You gotta say these things because it allows 18, 19, 20-year-old little American, you know, well-intentioned young boys, it allows them to go off and kill human beings. You start, you always know it's getting ready to get serious when the name for the enemy is coined and it's no longer respectful because it's getting ready to be some killing. And we see that in the papers with Jews in 1936 moving forward. You see this awful buildup, which was the collective getting ready to do something awful. And we see this with the liberal mindset, you know? I mean, I say lib tarbs from time to time and it's mostly just a tongue-in-cheek way of dealing with insanity. But whenever I get a chance to talk with liberals, I'm always respectful and I always try to engage them because there's the chance to move the needle a little bit. And they don't even want to engage anymore. They basically, they call, call us, you know, you can call people racists and you can call them deplorables and you can say they're stupid or they're a bunch of hicks or they're the fly over people in the middle of the country and they're less important, the hillbillies. And that allows you to basically game the system because you go, ah, it's not even worth arguing these people. What's interesting is your average liberal and your above-average liberal doesn't even know why they believe what they do. They just believe it in their little bunny rabbit heart. And if you start talking socio-political philosophy with them, you can tell most of them are about as thin as a piece of wax paper and they have a meltdown um, like somebody who kind of believes in God because someone told them to and they find out there maybe are some other perspectives and they kind of have like a religious meltdown. They have the same thing. They have a meltdown and they, ah, they won't even talk. So the fact that they just call us names and the, and the racism thing is the big one. It's to shut you up and since you're a racist and since you're a Nazi, because that's their next, they're holding back from saying Nazi when they say racist to you. That's what they really mean. Because if you do one more thing after that, they go right to Nazi and they go right to Germany. And it allows them to basically game the system and in many ways, in any other universe, you'd call it cheating. If it was football, you'd call it cheating. If it was baseball, you'd call it cheating. If it was boxing, you would call it rigged. If it was baseball, they would have run this, they would have shut them down. They would shut the team down. They would find everybody, a couple million bucks each and shut the team down. I mean, that's what's going on and you can see, you can hear it in the language. And, and so we're going to talk a little bit about that today and it's going on nationwide. People wonder what happened to Arizona. Well, I have some ideas about what happened in Arizona. I think we've got three big things that happened. I think the Republicans have been in their own box too long, listening to themselves and their message is still 10 years old. I think the Democrats have stopped having an argument and now they just game the system. Um, and I think that um, I think there's been a couple of big miscalculations. We're going to talk about those today a bunch and it should be fun. So our guest today is Sam Stone. He's been on the show before and Sam's been right-hand man to Al DeCiccio.
Sal DeCiccio.
Sal DeCiccio, yeah.
And um, Longtime Phoenix City Council member, like the last hardcore conservative in major city politics anywhere in this country.
And so he's um, is he termed out?
He is termed out.
Okay, and uh, and it's a bunch of libs coming behind him?
Well, I'm, and I'm running to replace him.
Okay.
So, you know, uh, I made the runoff. We have an oddball of an election system in Phoenix. We have a jungle primary in November.
Tell everybody what a jungle primary is.
So we had eight candidates in the field. It's a nonpartisan election, so there's no R D behind anyone's name. If anyone gets 50% plus one, it's over uh, right then and there. If not, you go to a runoff, which for us is in March 14th. Um, so I'm, I finished top two. I'm headed off to that runoff right now against uh, the liberal mayor's handpicked candidate. Um, so it's going to be a dogfight.
And the liberal mayor, she's the phony Mexican. She's the white girl who married the Mexican guy and after got divorced, kept his name and now she's running on his name.
Yeah, look, Kate Gallego is so white, you can see through her.
No, 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 she's a cracker for sure.
Yeah, yeah, look, I'm, I'm, I am white.
And then
I am white. She takes it to another level.
She's whiter than you. She's semi-opaque.
Yeah.
And then uh, then
It's like those hairless cats where you can see the organs underneath their skin.
Yeah, no, if you, she walks by the light, you can count the ribs.
Yeah.
And then the, the other one, the other guy, he got elected too, didn't he? What, or was he up this on in the midterm?
Ruben, yeah, the US Congressman. He is, that's a gerrymander district. It's, you know, it's like 70% D.
So what's interesting is the more I've gotten into politics, the more I basically want to slice heads and drop people. I think it's just a waste of time. The country's completely ruined. It's rot and ruined. It's gone.
I'm worried, Greg. I mean, for the first time, I'm worried. One of the things, I also was policy director for Kerry Lake. Um, one of the things that we talked about a lot on that campaign internally at we won is a return to federalism and really just
Bring that mic into you closer.
Really just hammering down on um, the federal government and pushing them out of Arizona. I actually think we're at the point where if we want to maintain the United States as 50 states, then a serious return to federalism is the only solution. I don't see that happening. I'm not saying that that's, but I'm saying that's the out. To let red states live like red states, blue states live like blue states and you'll essentially have left-right balkanization in this country. Okay.
So who are you running, who's the person you're running against?
Uh, his name is Kevin Robinson.
Okay. And so he's clearly a D, but he's just, it's basically L and C. It's, it's liberals and conservatives in this race because it's a nonpartisan race, right?
Yeah, it is. But you know, yeah, he's actually a Scottsdale resident, doesn't even live in the city of Phoenix. He's a professor at ASU. He was a former assistant police chief with the city of Phoenix, although he, he retired a commander and there's some question about what happened uh, there. He was a public information officer throughout his career, so he was a house mouse. And she recruited him to run. He's, he rented a house in Awatuki, which is in Phoenix. And you know, a liberal judge let him get away with calling that residency, even though he's still living in Scottsdale. So uh, mayor raised him half a million dollars, literally personally raised him half a million dollars in the primary. He spent it all. I raised 120 grand, I spent 75. I finished right behind him. Uh, so I feel pretty good. I actually have a bigger runway to raise money now than he does, simply because he's already drained a pretty significant portion of the dollars that would be available for a race like this.
Cool. All right. So I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. I have some thoughts on Kerry Lake. I have some thoughts on the election. I have some thoughts on Jim Lehman. I have thoughts on everything that's kind of gone on. You know, I've had a chance to meet these folks, talk to them, interview with them.
Bring it on.
All right. So I have to cage, I have to kind of cage these questions so we don't get too edited. Do you think the election, we just had the midterm election? Obviously, they said about 20% of machines went down.
In Maricopa County.
In Maricopa County. Do you think the election was rigged and that was intentional?
Yes and no. So one of the things I think is when you're looking at government, always start at the, the lowest common denominator, which is simply incompetence, which I don't think is the case in this case, because the printers were working fine ahead of election day. They were in all the vote centers and were working fine. Then on election day, they're not working well. Why is that? Something caused that. Whether it was they're bringing new, and they've not explained it, whether they're bringing new printers out online and those ones weren't set up properly. Or whether, you know, an employee went in there. But you can, you don't need a giant conspiracy that reaches to the top of the county. All you need is one technician who doesn't like Republicans and knows that there's going to be massive Republican turnout on election day to go, go screw with the system and create that kind of problem.
Right.
So that's entirely possible. And if you're Abe Hamaday, who lost by 500 votes, 500 and change, what happened in Maricopa County, frankly, he does deserve uh, to have that election, a special election or something because he, he, you can point to in that many people or more who were disenfranchised on election day, who just drove away from the polls, who checked in and didn't end up voting.
Are you following? How's his case going?
Uh, well, his initial case was thrown out deliberately because last, you know, two years ago, we filed a bunch of cases and the courts managed to be like, oh no, you filed this one too early, so that's thrown out. You filed this one too late, so that's thrown out. So no, you'd have no cases. Um, they filed this one early to have them throw it out so that the judge would define the window when they would be able to file an actual legal challenge. So he will file, look, they're not, whatever happens, Greg, and I, I mean, I know people on our side are going to get pissed hearing this, but I'm just going to be honest about this. The court's not going to overturn the election.
Right.
No court in this country, I don't care if it's a Republican-appointed judge or a Democrat-appointed judge, they're not going to overturn the election. You could get some certain things, like a court-appointed monitor for the next election. You could potentially make some changes to how those elections are administered for the next election with your lawsuits. But, and Kerry's going to get pissed at me hearing this, they're not going to do it. I mean, and, and if you want to do it on principle, I understand that.
Yeah.
But the reality is we as a party and as a, you know, people who are conservative and think we want to turn this thing around and still think it's possible, which I certainly do, we gotta be ready to move on and figure out how we win anyway.
Yeah.
And, and you know, don't, you can't just say, and, and I really am concerned that the expectation is sort of being set up, that if we don't win these lawsuits, which we're not going to win, that somehow then, then it's over and we've lost Arizona. I don't believe that one bit, but I do believe we have to counterfire with fire.
I think there's, uh, I'm going to give you a, okay. Do you know what the Democrats are doing to game the system right now?
I know a lot of things they're doing to game the system right now.
And these are not anecdotal. This is stuff you've heard, witnessed, seen.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
All right, so give me a few of them.
Well, first, they ballot harvest.
All right, so a lot of people around the country don't know what ballot harvesting is. There's a lot of different versions of ballot harvesting. Um, so let's say you're a Democrat activist and you want to make sure that elderly in old folks homes get their votes in. It is legal in Arizona to go to um, old folks homes or whatever you call assisted living centers and go around or have a table set up and out in the common area for everybody to vote and collect and sign those and bring them in.
No, that's actually illegal.
Okay.
That was a recent change. So that only a family member can turn in a ballot, a family member, a designated caregiver.
But that was legal last year, right?
That was legal, that was legal four years ago.
Okay, okay.
They actually changed that, pardon me. They changed that ahead of 2020.
Okay.
Now, they ignore that and they continue to do that. And so there's two versions of that then, right? So what they're doing, under a legal basis, they could go in there, they could set up a table, they would have to give every one of those ballots to the legal guardian. So maybe in that case, it's a nursing home, it's someone in the nursing home who's the, you know, technical guardian or overseer for that person. They could go turn it in. But that's not what happens. Um, there's two versions of ballot harvesting in my mind. I mean, not in my mind, but in terms of reality. One is that, what you've just described more or less, where that person whose ballot it is fills out the thing, seals the envelope, signs it and someone else takes it in and turns it in. I really actually don't have a problem with that. We need to fight back and do that too. Okay? What I have a problem with is that the problem is the chain of custody goes away at that point. So you have, you have to trust that they're honest in that.
Yeah.
And that they don't take that envelope home, steam it open, look at the votes and decide whether they're going to turn it in or throw it in the garbage, or throw it in the shredder. Right? That's the dirty version of ballot harvesting, which we also know happens. Democrats around the country have admitted that they participate in these schemes. These are normal tactics in New York and Chicago and other areas where they control it. And if they're willing to cheat each other, why wouldn't they be willing to cheat Republicans? That's just silly to assume they wouldn't. So they do. I have a friend, he is a very young guy. He was first ballot, he was eligible cast was in 2020, so he did. He's conservative, but he's a registered independent. He's got a Hispanic sounding last name. So here's a kid who has, he's 22 years old, 23 years old. He's only voted in one election, so that makes him a low propensity voter and meaning unreliable. He's not necessarily going to turn in on his own. Secondly, he's young. Third, he's got a Hispanic sounding last name, right? So if you look at those three things, I would assume if I'm a Democrat, based on the way they think that that's my voter, right? So what happened? He got about a half a dozen calls from people who called him up saying, who he's never met and never talked to, he doesn't know who these folks are, saying, hey, let me come pick up your ballot for you and get that turned in. We'll make that nice and easy for you.
Oh shit, that's not legal, is it?
No.
Oh.
No, but that's the same thing as the, the nursing home too.
Right, I know, I know.
Right? I mean, it's all the same thing in that sense. So yeah, no, it's totally illegal, totally wrong. But why did they, why did he get the call and I didn't? Simply because if you look at me, I'm a Republican, I'm registered, you know, I'm registered Republican. I'm 47 years old, I'm white. So I'm not
He's gettable, you're not.
He's gettable, I'm not.
Right.
And they would think, okay, here's someone who's not likely to vote, but if we can go grab his ballot, we can turn it in for him. So those are, those are the types of ballot harvesting that happens. And my view is it's going to be very hard to take away early ballots entirely. Um, you could do what Florida's done, which is a request system where each election, you have to request an early ballot.
Yeah.
I think we could get to there, but we're not going to get rid of them entirely. I think, I think you got to deal with the reality at hand is that a lot of people like them. Um, so the thing you need to do is to clean your voter rolls. Right? So there's the other element to this ballot harvesting, that I don't know what they're doing or if they're doing it entirely, but I know there's a hole in the system and I'm not sure where those ballots are going and no one else can tell me and, or has told me or anyone else, which is for 20 years, we haven't cleaned our voter rolls. So someone who moves out of state, they move from, you know, they're living in Arizona, they
It's got to be a big number.
Yeah. There's a big number of those. What did we see in the off-year special election, the odd-year special election we had in Maricopa County in, in uh, 2021? Remember? All of a sudden ballots were showing up in people's mailboxes, four, five, six of them for people, you know, who'd long since moved out of that house. There were reports coming in from all over Maricopa County about that happening. Then in, but, but in 2020, that didn't happen. And in 2022, it didn't happen. We didn't see that. But those ballots are still being printed. We know that because they're printing them off, off the total list that hasn't been corrected. So where did those ballots go?
Well, let me ask you, so the ballots don't, I mean, the ballots are blanks, right? Like they do the custom printing ballots. So when I go, doesn't matter where in town I go, I give my ID, my number, they print my ballot off, which has my district, my LD and all of that.
So it's your ballot that they print at that location.
Right.
Yeah. So, but the ballots that go in the mail are printed, so there's a ballot printed for Sam. It, it actually can be identified to me.
Even if you don't get mail, even if you don't ask for a mail-in ballot or they send you a mail-in ballot?
Or they send me a mail-in ballot.
So you got a mail-in ballot?
Oh yeah.
So did everybody get a mail-in ballot?
Not everybody. I signed up for mail-in ballots in 2020 because I didn't want to put a mask on and go to the polling place. So, and I've been trying to get myself off the early mail list ever since and you, you pretty much can't do it, which tells you something else you need to know. They're, they're, one of the things I really don't like, everyone wants to focus on like Steven Richer, Bill Gates, Steven Richer's the Maricopa County Recorder, Bill Gates, the essentially the, the head of the, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Why do, why, why do we need to assume that there's some shenanigans, fraud, conspiracy that extends to these people? That's foolish. That's people who don't know, if you don't know bureaucracy and you don't know government, you might assume that that would be necessary. But if you do know government, you know that it is not. That as a matter of fact, the main fault of these two individuals is certainly neither one was corrupt, neither one was trying to cheat an election for fellow Republicans. That's not happening.
I would say, because they're Republicans, right?
Yeah, they are Republicans. They're not trying to do that. But it is entirely possible, and I know Bill Gates from the city of Phoenix. He's a former city of Phoenix city councilman. I know Steven Richer quite well. Look, pure and simple, these folks do not know what's going on in their own departments. They're telling you and the public what their professional staff
Are telling them.
Right?
Right.
Yeah, they're not the ones actively overseeing these processes.
So it's like, it's very much like the deep state we see in Washington DC. We have a micro-deep state here of basically ongoing bureaucrats and everybody inside the loop knows how to put their thumb on the scale if they want to.
Absolutely, they do.
So you don't need some big collaborative, you
No, and, and big collaborative conspiracies have a habit of coming out.
Well, of course, I mean, we can't keep anything secret. So that's why I always, you know, this is what I've said as well. There's a lot of people involved and I think it could be tinkered with by somebody very low-level.
What, what happened on election day, for instance, with the printers could have been a single technician. And all he had to do was walk by each printer and change the settings. And as a technician, you, no one would even question you that you're standing over and checking each printer in a place or something. Simple as that. Could have done it entirely on their own hook without any instruction or guidance from anybody else. Of course, it could have been more elaborate, but it doesn't need to be. And, and always look for the simplest answer.
Yeah, yeah.
And Democrats, we know, there's a branded Democrat, especially young Democrats right now, who are willing to lie, cheat and steal and murder um, to get their way. They don't believe, it's what you talked about in your opening. They're dehumanizing their opponents. Oh, you're just racist. That means you're just bugs to be squashed. So there's no barrier to committing illegal acts against people who you consider bugs to be squashed. And so they would. And so would a single technician who feels that way potentially do that? Yeah, it's entirely possible. It's far more possible than that there's some wide-ranging conspiracy
I know, I, I believe the same thing. I believe the same thing. Uh, all right, so I'm going to say some stuff and I, I know this is going to piss off some of our friends who've run and not
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good at doing that, so go ahead.
So, okay, if you could in a sentence or two, without too much uh, mental machinations, what do you think's the number one reason Republicans got destroyed in a shitty economy run by morons that is getting nothing but worse? Why do you think Republicans got destroyed?
It's not one thing. Okay, it took a perfect storm. I mean, it really did. So, so anyone who points to one thing is, is wrong. It was a perfect storm. Roe v Wade was significant.
Yep.
There were a lot of under 30 voters who turned out for the first time ever. And they turned out to vote Democrat to protect uh, what they see as a right to access abortions. So that was significant. That overcame something. Two, there's a portion of the Republican Party that if you are Trump-aligned, they're not going to be behind you. And so all it took, you know, you could, you could overcome the other factors, but that factor, look across this country, the Trump-aligned candidates underperformed non-Trump-aligned Republicans by about 10% with Republicans. Had those Republicans voted for those candidates, they would have all won. Um, so, so there's two. Three, we've been trashing early ballots and, and trying to play by a system that doesn't exist. So if you're in Florida, if you're in other states where we're playing by the system, whether it's vote on election day or like Florida, which does early ballots, but has a bit of a different, you have to request them
Request them, recycling, yeah.
Where we did that, where we fought by the rules at hand, we won. Where we fought by the rules we wanted, Democrats fought by the rules that existed and we want, and they won, right? They beat us. So if you have early ballots, don't do anything illegal, but harvest them as legally as you, you know, within the bounds of the law as best you possibly can. We were down about 4% in turnout among Republicans in our rural counties here versus 2018. Here in Arizona. If those 4% more Republicans in rural counties turn out, every Republican here wins.
Let me ask you a question. The, the rural counties didn't have the printer issue? It was just Maricopa County?
No, that was just Maricopa County.
Okay.
So there's no printer issue there. It really is a matter of ballot harvesting and one side doing it and one side not.
All right, so I'm going to give you my take. So we, what, we flipped 11 house seats up in New York, right?
Yep.
And they were pro-Trump candidates.
Yep.
And they were also moderate, pro-choice candidates.
Yeah.
Now, so this is my, this is what I see.
This is why I said it took a perfect storm. It had to be everything.
Yeah.
So if you, if you escaped on one of those things, if you weren't
You could win.
You won. If you weren't, if you were okay on abortion, you won. And if you went out and chased early ballots in your district, you won.
You had a potential win, yeah.
You could have done any of those three things and you win.
So um, like I, I look at Kerry's campaign, for instance, and I feel like Kerry should have handled Lee one. The, the problem is Roe v Wade moved the argument in entirely new direction. We've been able to be theoretically pro or anti because it was out of our hands and we weren't going to be ruling on it.
And now, now it's, I mean, it's just a moral position. Now it's different.
Yeah, now, before it was moral, it was a little moral signal, here's who I am.
Right.
The problem is now everybody knows it's on the, it's, it's, it's something that's coming in our legislature. So, you know, we need to, as a, as a group, especially the AZ GOP, has got to be able to say, I am pro-life. I believe in the tenets of personal responsibility and life as being sacred, but I also am not running for governor of my church. I'm running for the governor of Arizona and I also know the plurality of Americans do not agree with me. And there's got to be some compromise in there. And if I get good legislation that respects life and a woman's right to self-determinism, um, I, I'm going to be for that. But I, and I think there's a balance to be struck between a woman's self-determinism and, and respecting the sanctity of life, but not having it, we can't have the respect for the sanctity of life trump a woman's self-determinism. And there's got to be a balance. And it would be a really five-sentence, 30 seconds, and it would shut everybody down. And our conservatives, you know, there's a couple of these PACs here in town that are super conservative, run by like super right-wing religious women. And they like launch everybody. They, they come with the money and get people going. You know, some of the groups I'm talking about?
I absolutely do. I absolutely do.
So, oh, can we name them?
Kathy Herod and Cap.
Yeah. Yeah.
So careers on a policy. They're the leader of this.
Yeah, yeah.
Look, I talked to a bunch of legislators when the decision was made this past summer, right? And one of the things I I was saying to him is, listen, I think you need to right away, go ahead and refer to the ballot two questions. You're gonna have to refer to because it's a little complicated. But what you do is refer a question, should abortion be legal? Yes or no? And then if yes, then it moves to question two, which is what kind of restrictions or regulations do you want? So I I pushed a bunch of legislators to go put that on the ballot. To put it there and then say.
You mean for the general public to vote on?
Yep.
Oh, I'm totally against that.
Absolutely. You need to do it. And here's why. We should have done it in this cycle. It takes it off the candidates.
Oh, that that's cowardice on the candidates part.
Two.
And the population, the population's crazy.
No, the candidates are not in office. They can't change these laws. Carrie Lake could do nothing to change abortion. Abe Hamaday could do nothing to change abortion. Blake Masters could do nothing to change abortion because they're not in office. It would have been better to have it on the ballot this time because now it's going to be on the ballot in twenty four. We just had a referendum on it in our election where it cost us badly. Now the Democrats are going to go and they are going to place it. They're going to gather signatures and they're going to go ahead and place it on the ballot in twenty four and make it a driving turnout issue for twenty twenty four also. So what we got was two election cycles of of voters being driven by it instead of just one. So that's one. Two. If you put it on the ballot, then your candidates can just point out and go, okay, voters have a right to decide. I'm pro-life. But voters have a right to decide. And what I would have done in the second question. Is I would have written one side of it ourselves and given the Democrat caucus in the house in the state house here, the ability to write the other side. Let them write their crazy. So you take it, you write twelve weeks, you write. You know, sonograms, whatever. You you put in all the various restrictions.
So is anyone doing it?
No, no, it's the Democrats are going to go and put their version with unlimited abortion on the ballot.
So right, there's basically.
And it's gonna pass.
Infanticide is going to be on one side, and then there'll be no option on the other side.
Yeah, that's what it's going to be.
Don't you think? I mean, it doesn't have to be a candidate. It could be anybody puts something on the the voter initiatives, right?
Yeah, it takes a lot of signatures, but Democrats will have the money for that. They'll gather the signatures. They're going to put that on the ballot. They're going to put their version of it, which will have very little or no restriction at all. And that's going to happen. I mean, we had a choice. Do you want to get out in front of it? Or do you want to let them do it? So it's not cowardice. It's not running away from it. It's political reality. And the political reality is in twenty twenty four, Democrats are going to have a bill here in Arizona. And in every other state, they can't. Because they know this is a good driver for their base for turnout. They're going to have a bill for unlimited access to abortion. And it's going to be, they're going to throw in things like state funding of it and everything else.
You think the best thing ought to be is some sort of smart conservative voter initiative where.
Yeah.
Because theirs will clearly have a lot of crazy and people can see that.
Right.
So if you put something reasonable, give them a reasonable option that is still.
And that's what you're going to have to do if you want to limit it at all.
Yeah.
That's what you're going to have to do. And the reality is that, you know, some of these folks like like Kathy Herod, you know, they understand that this thing's going to pass if it's on the ballot, that legal. Abortion, more people would like it to be legal than want it to be illegal.
Right.
I mean, that's just a fact.
Right.
And I'm big on dealing with the facts.
I mean, it seems like about eighty-five percent of Americans are pretty comfy with some version of abortion. It's a big number.
Even if it's not eighty-five, it's seventy.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's a crazy, big number. Look at what happened in Kansas. Look at Montana. I mean, all of these very, very conservative states, look at what's happening there. You know. So so this is an issue. You just have to understand where you're what you're dealing with.
My point is that conservatives have been chicken shit about adjusting the argument because the argument is not where it was before. It has shifted to a whole new place. And so they don't even acknowledge it. They just say I'm pro-life. And then and then they get a bunch of money from Sam Bankman-Fried to pump, you know, ten million dollars in here the last three weeks, basically saying. Carrie Lake's a lunatic who won't even let abortions happen, rape and incest.
I mean, you know.
Say that enough, and it just scares people go, you know, it scares moderates.
Here's the trick is you don't have to tell the truth in those ads. I mean, they don't have to be honest about what Carrie Lake's position was or is or anything like that. If you listen to her talk about it. You know, I mean, the fact is, we talked about she pushed harder than anyone else. I've got a lot of plaudits around like from from folks around the country for pushing back and going. Well, yeah, but my opponent believes in killing a baby on the day of its birth, right? Which she did. She had she believed in zero. Katie Hobbs believed and said she she believes in no limitations whatsoever. So baby is literally born at nine months. Someone jabs a bloody, you know, pickaxe in its head and kills the thing. That's what she's she's okay with it. The Democrats are okay with that. We tried to highlight that, but you're only going to go so far. I mean, this is the the not. The the thing I and I kept pushing, and this is something I don't think Kerry handled well, quite frankly, is that she cut off a lot of the left media. And she did it for good reasons, right? Because they give you such bad coverage.
Yeah.
But I refuse to do that because there's a lot of people who are not going to be listening to this podcast. There's a lot of people who are. But there are people who generally align with us and vote with us already, and we hope we'll get some. There are going to be some more. You have to reach as many audiences as possible. I mean, this is the. This is the death knell of journalism that we've been watching.
Well.
But you you still have to use it as best you can.
Well, and and I see where she's coming from, telling me to pound sand. But the problem is, is she was so pro-life in the entire campaign. You know, if she had ever gave any nuanced.
But she she did initially, and she actually got moved a little bit on that to the right. I mean, if you look at what we wrote up, she her initial position was rape incest, you know, three exceptions. That kind of got pushed out. I don't think it was a good move.
I totally agree. It's bananas.
No, I mean, you know, this is the problem.
I'm ultra conservative.
I am ultra conservative, too. I look, I'm forty seven years old. I've gone through life as a, you know, not not too settled kind of guy, and I don't have any children because I've been stupid stupid careful about it this whole time, right? Because I don't want to be the cause of an abortion, period. I think it's really important. I think it's a critical issue, but I think we also just have to deal with it as the reality that exists, which is the reality that exists is the majority of people. Wants some version of legal.
Yeah.
And you can have a position to be pro-life, but if you if you're trying to make the argument that. Someone who's been raped or is the victim of incest.
That's bananas.
You're not, you're never going to win that argument.
No, it's bananas.
Well, I mean, and I understand the people who are like, well, hey, I'm a rape baby and I'm I'm worthwhile. Yeah, you are. True, true, absolutely. But that doesn't change the fact that this is a losing public argument.
It oh, it absolutely is. And 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 this is what I'm saying. All right. So I'm going to give you my two cents. I don't think they cheated on the election. I think we lost. I think we lost because we're tone deaf, we're intransigent, and we will not evolve.
Well, what what I said in terms of the thing is, is honestly that, you know, I don't even necessarily consider cheating. I don't know what happened with Maricopa. I'm I'm going to throw that out there. We've talked about it. It could be a technician, this, that and the other.
If you either incompetence of malfeasance at some level, I don't think there was a conspiracy.
But but you can look at absolutely the ballot harvesting situation with us going out and telling people to be afraid of early ballots. I'm sorry, they're effective. So if they're out there, you got to use them, and we didn't. Period. We could have done that in one. Period. The abortion issue. If you'd been a little less stringent on it, it would have made a big difference.
Yep.
I mean, it it that just is what it is, right? The other part of this is, and there's a real element to this. Americans do not like sore losers.
Oh, yeah.
We do not. And so when you're constantly rehashing the past and demanding correction of, you know, past frauds. The, you know, that resonates with a portion of the base, but it does not resonate with the average American. In fact, the average American looks at that as weakness.
Yeah.
And so you've got to get away from that. When I talk about elections, I never I'm never worrying about the past except to learn from it and figure out how we're going to do better.
So I had this kind of thing that the system is too big and there's too many people for it to be too Machiavellianly rigged.
That's the problem. Any any large conspiracy would come out.
Right.
Sooner or later it would come out.
Nine state conspiracy.
No, 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 no.
Now, is and and I also think there's always a little bit of malfeasance going on.
There's always. Yes.
But I think the abortion message. You know, okay, what are the statistics on women who've been assaulted or raped at one point in their life? It's it's an astounding number.
It's a very high number. Yeah.
I I've heard as much as one in four.
Yeah, twenty twenty percent is a pretty commonly quoted number, one in five. Yeah.
So now if that's what the Republicans, women, Republican women, and that's women.
Women.
That's not Democrats, that's not Republicans.
That's all women.
So that means the one in four or five Republican women quietly, when they get in the ballot box, that's hanging over them. That that one out of four or five women.
It's not just, it's not just sex assault. I get what you're saying a hundred percent, and I agree a hundred percent. I'm going to tell you a story. I tell every candidate I've worked with. I told Carrie Lake this story. And I wish candidates would pay a little bit more attention. And I'm going to change the names, obviously, because these are real people I'm talking about. But a girl I knew in high school whose family was super religious dad was a. Evangelical minister. They would spend the summer rolling around town on rolling around the country in one of those, you know, abstinence buses, right? Like save it for marriage. The problem they have with that is their fifteen year old daughter was not saving anything for marriage.
Right.
So she gets pregnant, right? Here's fifteen year old girl who mom's Sian of the church, bakes everything for every bake sale. Her dad's, you know, the pastor, whatever. They're rolling around the country in their abstinence tour bus and all this kind of thing. She gets pregnant. What do you think happened? Dad went out of town for an ecclesiastical conference and mom hustled her little daughter to the clinic and got it cleaned up before dad knew ever anything about it. That's what happened. And I tell that story all the time for one reason. If you call a pollster, calls that household and that mama answers the phone and she's sitting there in the living room, she's pro-life all day long.
When she's in the voting booth?
When she's in the voting booth? What do you what do you think she's thinking about?
I know. I know. And I talk about this reality all the time. You know, the the reality is if one in four or one in five or one in ten. Republican women has had something like this happen, they will quietly, if it if it's an election that matters, and it matters right now.
Doesn't have, it doesn't even have to be one in ten if it's one in fifty.
I know. I know.
I mean, this is, yeah, changes everything in elections.
Why I said this issue was bigger than all of the malfeasance.
It is.
Because.
You're not wrong about that at all.
Because the final results are so close in every one of these races.
Well, one of the things you pointed to New York, some of the Trump leaning candidates who won anyway, but they weren't out on this issue. Understand, too, though, they had an advantage. People in New York understand that the New York legislature, the governor, everything is still going to be controlled by Democrats who will make sure it's legal. So those folks have a little bit more room to operate. It doesn't matter as much in their race.
Right.
Right? It matters. When you're talking about the governor, when you're talking about the Arizona legislature, when you're talking about the AG, it matters. It matters to people. And. We saw that across this country. It's a big issue.
So I think personally, I think we screwed up the election. I think we screwed up our message. I think we weren't nimble. I I think we completely misread the abortion thing.
I agree, like I said, but.
They stuck abortion up our ass.
They did. They absolutely did.
And I saw it when it was happening because they clearly had done the polls and run the numbers. They weren't even, they weren't even really campaigning. They were like, no, we're just going to blow this money out the last month.
But understand, there's there's two things going on there. It's not just the one. The ballot harvest is tied to that. Okay, because. What they've done in all these states now, coming out of twenty twenty, they spent a lot of money, Zuckerbucks, now FTX money, now all this other stuff. They have plenty of money that isn't stolen. That they're they're using for this. They have perfected their ballot gathering process. Now, whether you want to call it harvesting and or trafficking and it's a legal connotation or just ballot gathering, they're good at it. Intensity, the things that we used to look for in election because we just had an election where Republicans were showing a lot of intensity and Democrats weren't. Those things don't matter anymore. They're going to go gather their ballots. They're going to have their turnout in every single election, period. Their baseline turnout is higher than it was four years ago. And we cannot change that without, I mean, if you got rid of the ballots entirely, but again, deal with the reality at hand.
Right.
The reality at hand is that those ballots will be here in twenty twenty four.
Right.
So if you want to win in twenty twenty four in Arizona, and we can, you have to, I mean, you have to put this abortion issue. Away somehow, get move around it, do what you can. It's going to be on the ballot. For sure. So that's going to be tough, but but do what you can. But two, go out and gather the ballots. Go go call all the old folks out there. Make sure they turn in. Send people to their house, knock on their door. I don't care if it takes a trip of you walking them to their mailbox. Do it legally. Do what we have to. We can win.
Candidates need to stop listening to the PACs that give them their initial inertia. They have to. They have to have courage in their campaigns to say real things. And, you know, Kerry was courageous in so many ways. And I thought in that issue, unless she truly believes that in her heart, and if she believes that in her heart, at some point.
Is very pro-life. She is very pro-life, but again, her, she moved a little bit on that issue. See, actually, the only issue I can point to that she moved on, I'm actually proud of that. Because we we really developed her policy platform to peel across. You know, across the both election, both parts of the election, of course, the primary and the general. So if you talk about things like water, if you're talking about things like. A dual track education, making sure the kids get CTEC and CTED embedded in their high schools. If you talk about getting the homelessness off the streets, those are things that you can run out in any part of any election cycle, period. When you get caught up on the issues as things like this, and they're very different in the primary and the general. Well, in the primary, she actually had a position that was softer than the position she ended up taking in the general. It's kind of the reverse of what you want to do. Right?
Yeah.
Our position in the primary and everyone left it alone was three exceptions. And then then she, you know, she got some of those folks got into her ear a little bit and pushed her, and they they were aligned with her viewpoint, I understand. But at the same time, she she actually tacked to the right on that issue in the general, and that was. You know, that's that's not going to play well. Again, it's it's a majority issue where Republicans are not the majority.
No, not at all. And it's a very small faction of Republicans who are that fanatic about it. It's not, it's not a big number.
It's not.
It's seven percent. It's it's not.
It might be fifteen, but I mean, again, you're still not talking about any kind of number that's going to help you win an election.
Right. And who are they going to vote for? Were they going to come out and vote for Kerry?
They're going to vote for your conservative candidate regardless.
Of course they are. Well, it's um, it's it's frustrating for me. You know, I have seen several of the candidates and talked to them who ran and lost. And I think they lost. And I didn't like how it went down. It wasn't a clean loss, but I still think they lost.
No, I I agree. I agree. I've said to every Republican candidate in the state of Arizona for years that I've worked with, that if you want to win here, you got to win by three because there's always going to be some. Activity going on.
Yeah.
Right? Now, maybe it doesn't, and it doesn't affect you in winning, you know, you win by three, you do win by three. But win by three, my take on it, you know, and again, Kerry's not going to like hearing this because I've, you know. But my take is she won by just under three, which means she lost. And she lost to ballot harvesting. The 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 machines might have had a small effect, but what she lost to is ballot harvesting, pure and simple. I, if we go out and harvest the ballots, not illegally, but just go make sure we get them in from those rural counties. Four percent more turnout among Republicans in those rural counties, Carrie Lake wins in a walk. So probably does everyone else on the ticket here. That. Let's look at the lowest hanging fruit. The lowest hanging fruit is that we left Republican ballots sitting there that we could have gotten.
How do you, who who would be the? Would that be, who who would be the ones to organize to take care of that?
Well, so that's actually kind of an interesting thing, and I'm going to I'm going to bring up something most people here don't know, but. The biggest part of organizing for that, when we developed an advantage over more than a decade in early ballots until the last few years, was John McCain. See, a US senator or governor can fundraise enough. You need a couple of million dollars a year. You need to keep an organization on the ground that maintains the data, that builds relationships, that does GOTV. Year in, year out, where people are real professionals and know what they're doing. McCain maintained that for his entire time in the Senate. And as soon as a primary election was over, no matter what you had said about John McCain or anything else, if you had an R behind your name, John McCain put his machine in behind you and and the turnout ops were there. There's only a couple of people, a governor, a senator can do it, or a state party can do it, or you can do like they do in Florida where they have, it's actually the Florida Senate Majority Fund, State Senate Majority Fund.
So like the AZ GOP.
That's the type of what you can do with that. It's a little more difficult with a some with an organization like the AZ GOP because it's an elected chair position and elected leadership. And so every few years you have new leadership there where someone has different ideas than the last one, and you really can't do this effectively. In terms of maintaining a turnout machine if you have that. So it's actually pretty rare that a party structure, the only one I'm aware of is Oklahoma, where they have a hired executive director who runs the party instead. Otherwise, you do need more stability, right? You need a, you need a constant focus. You cannot be one year, you're over here, one year, you're over there, all around the place. You've got to stay focused on. You build relationships in communities. You make, you know, you make sure you have a big network of people who are ready to be activated as soon as ballots begin dropping to go door to door, to get on the phone to, you know, go. Get those ballots turned in. McCain did that for all those years, and nobody really understood that. And nobody really gave it the credit it deserves, and it's there.
Because he, there's about half the Republican Party who hates his guts.
And and I understand why, and I'm not a big fan. I I mean, I'm saying all this.
Yeah.
Despite the fact I'm not a fan.
But he did stuff right.
He did, he did some stuff right. He did right.
Right.
And let's not throw out, you know, we're throwing out babies with bathwater here. Like. If someone knows, if you have an organization that knows how to run a turnout operation statewide, you you better well figure out how to keep them in place.
Right.
Don't play politics on it. Don't go, oh, they're McCain. I don't like them. Who gives a dang? I want to win.
Well, what's, you know, so basically, we've lost both of our senate seats now. Every mayor.
And the governorship, so we don't have those two.
We don't have the governor. We don't have the senate seats. We we've lost the major cities. I mean, it's a Democrat state.
It is and it isn't.
It's a Republican state that is run so poorly by Republicans that the Democrats are allowed to have it.
Now, I wouldn't even go that far. I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even go that far. We've had a bad couple of election cycles here. I mean, really, that's what it amounts to, because if you go back before that, we're dominating. And if you look at the underlying numbers, we can still dominate.
What do what do you attribute that to? What are what are we missing? What's changed?
Well, first off, I.
Is it McCain being gone?
Well, that turnout machine being gone is a big part of it. That's what I'm getting at is that was a huge thing, but also then, at the same time, we started bashing the early ballots and made people uncomfortable with them. So, you know, we we hurt ourselves further. Not only did we not have the machine, but now we're telling people to fear them. That was bad. So both of those things played a big role. Without any question, though, that played a huge role, not having that turnout machine in these last two cycles. And no one understands that because they didn't see it. It was behind the scenes. McCain would go raise the money for it in DC. He'd hire operatives. People didn't like it locally because, you know, they kept it in there. They kept all the money in their little circle and their family, the McCain machine. Okay, fine, but you know what? Those are the rewards you get for being the one who's in power. That's the reward your supporters get. So stop complaining about it and start winning elections and then you can get, you know.
Then you can, then you can choose.
You can, yeah, then you can choose. So but.
Tell me how that, do you have any idea how that machine worked?
Yeah, yeah. They had people in every town and every county, in every area, who were on the payroll permanently. And throughout the year, these people are organizing, they're signing voters up, they're maintaining good data lists. And as soon as it hit, they have a whole list of volunteers. That they activate to immediately go start gathering in those ballots.
All right. Now tell me how ballots are gathered legally by Republicans.
You call somebody up. We know when somebody turns in their ballot, right? I don't know if I dropped it in the mail today, but once it shows up and and it's been checked in.
It gets scanned.
It gets scanned, and then I know my.
Even if it's not counted, we know their ballots.
Right, the ballot's in. So now I can say, okay, Sam's turned his ballot in. I don't need to chase.
Who has access to that data?
Every everybody. It's public.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you have to purchase the list from the the county.
Okay.
But every can, every major campaign does.
Okay.
The party and all these. So we have that, and you get daily updates. So every day, we know whose ballots came in yesterday. We don't know how they voted. We don't know, you know, they're still in their envelopes, but we know they're in. So then now I call. You up and I go, hey, you haven't turned in your ballot yet. We need you to get that ballot in. And you go, yeah, I'm going to turn it in. Then I wait a couple of days and I look and you've still not turned it in. I call you back and I go, hey. I really need you to drop that in the mail. Greg, I gotta get, you gotta get that ballot in. And now I give you a little persuasion. We've got our candidates. It's going to be super tight. You know, we we've got some locals. I know you're friends with so and so. And this is where it gets really down to the nitty gritty. That bit about, I know you're friends with so and so. That's where that's where the local element and maintaining the machine year year in and year out comes into play, right? Because if someone calls you up and they're like, hey, Greg, I know you're friends with so and so who's on the ballot over there, you got to make sure you get it in so they get elected. Otherwise, they're not going to, and that matters to you, right? Because we're talking about one of your friends. Talking about someone you know, someone you care about.
But that's not ballot harvesting. That's just calling people up, right?
No, that's just, that's legal.
Right.
Right? It's chasing early ballots. Whether you want to call it ballot harvesting or just chasing early ballots.
Were we not doing that?
No, we didn't do that in the last two cycles. We told people we trashed them. We trashed them. We told them, don't trust them. You got to bring them in on election day. You got to, you know, come in and tear them up in front of the election monitor and demand they print you a new one. Well, okay, but a lot. Well, okay, but a lot of people aren't just going to do that. They're just going to stay home and that's what they did. And had we gone out and actually gathered, you know, not gathered, but go ahead and pursue those ballots, push, get them in, do all those things that we used to do effectively.
Democrats actually go pick them up?
Yeah, they will break the law, we don't. I mean, that's the difference, right? Is our operation will call them 10 times, will push them, will send someone to their door. We're like, hey dude, we will walk you to your mailbox, I will drive you to the post office, whatever you want, right? Democrats are like, here, just give it to me. Problem with the Democrat version is that you can steam, you know, you take it, you put it in your envelope over a pot of boiling water, you steam it open, you check it. That's how they've done it. They, they've got people who have admitted to having done this in other states. I, you know, are they going to do that here? Of course they are. If they, if they're gathering, that's why you don't want people gathering other people's ballots. That should never happen. But, but I still don't even care. I don't even care, let them break the law. I'd love for them to get arrested, I'd love for them to face consequences. Let them break the law, but let us win elections. And we win elections because the fact of the matter is that if you look at it, this is still a center-right country. This is a center-right state. If we have anything like the right message and the right mechanics, we win. Period. Look around this country, I cannot point to a single candidate who had both the correct message on our side and the right mechanics who lost. But I can put into a lot who missed one or the other and didn't get there.
What did Carrie miss?
She missed the mechanics. Every, every, we, everyone here missed the mechanics.
Her message was acceptable.
I think the message on abortion was not, was, was the one area I wasn't super comfortable, just because she tacked back to the right.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I'm a big believer in just lay out your position and stay there.
Think she'll, think she'll run again?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'd like to see her, I'd like to see her run again, and I'd like to see her behind the scenes play. You know, I, I'll tell you what she should do. She should run for, you know, she should have run for AZ GOP.
No, absolutely not.
Why not?
Uh, AZ GOP is a, is a dedicated, is dedicated in fighting. The organizationally, and this is a GOP problem across the country, it's a DNC problem across the country. This is why the Democrats don't use their state parties as their organizing vehicles. And that's why we shouldn't either, because they're caught up in politics and personality games and all this other stuff. And you can't do that. What Carrie Lake should do, and, and look, pure and simple. One, if you're going to sue, sue on really limited grounds. Like I want an election monitor for the next election, court-appointed monitor for the next election. That kind of thing's reasonable, some process changes, whatever. Pick, then go pick a subject. I don't care if you want to put election integrity on the ballot. Pick something that you're going to put on the ballot in 2024. Or that you're going to pursue as a policy issue. So go pursue your homelessness plan and lobby it with the legislature, go pursue your dual track education.
Between now and then?
Yeah, you got, you gotta show your people you're doing something.
Yeah.
And then go ahead and get a rematch with Katie Hobbs. You know, right after 24 election you announce, come out and I think you're going to beat her in 26. I really do, because Katie Hobbs, we're already seeing it. She didn't campaign, every word she said during her campaign was a lie, period. Everything, everything she said was a lie. She campaigned on secure the border, cut taxes, all this stuff. Katie Hobbs is A, she's actually kind of an idiot. I mean, I mean that literally, she's a low IQ operator.
Yeah.
But two, she is a nutball lefty. I mean, nutball lefty. You know, the press lets them lie about stuff and they get away, they get elected, but they, they don't hide when they're in office. So you're going to see it. Those are, that would be the best thing for Carrie Lake's future. I'm, I'm a little afraid of these, even if you're right, even if I'm wrong, which I, you know, hey, look, I've been wrong plenty in my life, maybe I'm wrong, maybe there was more that went on with these elections, you know? But, but even if I'm wrong about that, and she and the people pursuing them a hundred percent are right, you have to look at what the real likely outcome is. And the real likely outcome is you're not going to convince anyone who doesn't already believe that they were stolen, that they were stolen.
Right, right. Well, I hope she, uh, you know what? I think she'd be good for Arizona. I think she's got the pep and she's got the name recognition.
I hope she does.
I hope she doesn't go through something national, I think it'd be wrong.
No, I agree. Had she gotten in there, folks, the thing I've been most disappointed about in these last few weeks, I was really excited to go in there with her and, um, the policy, because she was going to do the one thing that I believe Republicans have been missing the most, which is lay out a really aggressive forward policy agenda, not just what we're going to stop. Ron DeSantis has done a great job of stopping nuttiness and gotten a lot of credit for it, right? But that's only half of the, the sauce, that's half the secret sauce.
Still gotta run the, you still gotta run the state.
Yeah, you still gotta have something you're, you're actually building on, that you're doing. And Carrie, we had laid out a really aggressive policy plan. The dual track education thing is really, when we went talking to companies, we're like, listen, after 10th grade, every kid who goes to high school in Arizona is going to get sat down, they're going to get an option to finish and earn a CTEC, CTED degree or certificate in their final two years. Or they, you know, go a traditional four-year college path, either or. And we're going to deeply embed all these programs. You run a business that needs people that know how to operate high-tech machinery, right? What is the biggest barrier to you doing business and growing your business?
Of course, it's people, it's talented populace.
Right. So that would have been the biggest difference maker we've seen in public education anywhere in this country in 50 years.
Yeah. No, there were so many things I, I really did like, and I knew you were, uh, I knew you were in on a lot of policy thinking that had been gone on early on. Um, I'm just, you know, I was just disappointed, we, uh, we cut off our nose despite our face over this abortion thing.
And I do, it drives me crazy. It drives me crazy. I'm pro-life, but I'm going to be real, real about it. And the reality is that most people are not.
Yeah, you know, listen, I, I, I say this all the time, you know, guys have a tendency to be very persuaded by someone taking away guns. Guys vote over guns and girls vote over abortion. It is self-determinism. Women is self-determinism and men, it's safety, the ability to protect my tribe.
In both, there, you know, interestingly, I'm, I'm a big believer, I'm a big history student, history buff. And, but also that means looking a little bit at sort of physiology and, and human development, right? And psychology and what goes into it. And frankly, both of those things are defense and protection mechanisms for the different sexes, right? For a woman, um, historically, obviously it's changing now.
Yeah.
Uh, it has changed now with modern medicine, but getting pregnant and having a baby was incredibly dangerous, life-threatening thing for them, right? So the ability to control that-
It was also for centuries, it, it's a, it's a trap.
Yeah.
You get pregnant, I got pregnant, it happened.
Right.
I didn't make myself pregnant. I mean, it's, uh-
No, and then, yeah, it's really, it's really limiting for them at that point.
That's right. And now that woman becomes very dependent, all the way up until the last 50 years, it's got to rely on a man. And there's resentments that are built into our cells about that.
50 years is not nearly enough to deprogram thousands and thousands of years of evolution and experience. And so, look, that's, that is absolutely the case, right? These, most human behaviors, I mean, if you, if you really dig down, I, one of the reasons I really like Jordan Peterson is he's very good at understanding the connection between sort of fundamental human imperatives that are, are driven by our DNA and our historical biology. Um, and how those impact modern life. And the fact of the matter is that the decisions that many of us make, frankly, the vast majority of us across this planet are in large part driven by those same fundamental things.
Right.
Why are, why are we afraid of the dark when we're children? What, what, we have no experience that would teach us to be afraid of the dark. Nothing bad has happened to us in the dark, but yet we're terrified of the dark. Why? Well, because that's a biological imperative that's been passed down from generations.
Because for 10,000 years, that's when they showed up to kill your family.
Yeah, that's when bad stuff happened. And so the dark was, was terrifying and being out alone in the dark was terrifying and very potentially deadly. And so we have this ingrained fear. Well, women, when you start talking about this, there is the same kind of thing underlying that surface. And you're right, with men and guns, same thing.
It's, it's, it's interesting, even the vast majority of women, there is a number and, and there's a lot of nuanced polling on it. There is a whole group of women who would never get an abortion, but they don't want anyone telling them they can't have one. And that's a big fucking number.
It's absolute, look, this is, this is a crusher of an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, when the court came out with this decision, I was sitting there, so I can't tell you how much swearing I did that day. I mean, I'm sitting there FF and MF and all this stuff, because I'm like, can we just deal with this? When we're not in the middle of an election cycle? I knew we were-
Which is almost never, I mean, it's almost never.
And that's the problem, we're never out of it.
It's a good thing that it happened, but we didn't tack properly, we didn't adjust to it. We still are messaging like it's 1986.
Well, we're also running from the portion of the party that's absolutist. And, and we do this a lot. And Democrats don't do this outside of office, they only do it in their policy. And it's sort of the opposite, right? Like, we give lip service to the absolutists in our, our party, but then we govern not in an absolutist manner. Um, Democrats dismiss the absolutists in their party on the campaign trail, but they govern as absolutists.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's really, it's an interesting, I mean, there, I mean, we're talking about an interesting psychological phenomenon or case study. That's the fact, is we, we give lip service to them. And then part of the reason the base is so pissed off at, at the establishment is that then we don't govern that way, right?
Right.
Democrats actually do govern that way, they just don't give lip service to it.
Right, because they believe in the same kooky and they don't want anybody else knowing they believe in it. And we just want to win the election, very, very cynical.
Right.
Yeah.
No.
Um, so, um, what are you doing between now and March when you're rough?
March 14th, so yeah, I have a big organizing meeting for my campaign next week. And then the following week, uh, obviously we're kicking off at doors, I won't do it over Christmas weekend, but every other weekend, uh, we got door knocking going on, I got calls to make. My election's all mail. Uh, so everyone who's a registered voter in the city of Phoenix will get a ballot in the mail. And it will then be sent back in, it'll be counted by the city clerk. So, you know, if people are concerned about Maricopa County in my race, they don't need to be. We're knocking every, every Saturday, I'm probably going to add in some weekday walks also. If you have anyone who lives in Awatuki Arcadia, Central Phoenix portion of this district, or even if they're close, and they want to host a home event, you know, I tell you-
Are they in PV?
Not PV. So PV is a little carve-out.
So not like, say, anything along 32nd Street and Shea up to, how's 32nd and Shea?
No, that's, that's Scottsdale.
Okay, it's all crazy over there.
It's all crazy, it's all cut around.
At one point I had Scottsdale Water, Phoenix Police, Phoenix garbage, you know, I was like-
As, as I tell people, look, pure and simple, if you're in, we have a little bit of the district that hangs outside of it, but if you're not in our, our Awatuki Arcadia, Little Arcadia, you're probably not in my district, Biltmore. That's, you know, um, so that's it. But if you're in that area, you know, even if you're willing to put, if you've got five or six friends and neighbors from the area that you can put in a house, I will sit in front of them and chat and answer questions for an hour, because I'm going to get another one out of that. And moving on, this is a very grassroots thing. Uh, you can go to samstone.votes, my website, uh, sign up there to help us out. Obviously we need money, that's, the mayor will very soon, if she hasn't already, start running my opponent around Washington, New York, California, raising money there. Um, you know, six, eight years ago, these races used to top out around a hundred, 200 grand. Um, now they're at a million.
It's nuts.
It's nuts.
The money that got spent on the Senate campaign and the governor campaign?
So that's actually another thing that nobody's talking about, because the press doesn't want to, but we should be, because every candidate on the Republican side here got massively outspent. In fact, that happened almost in most cases in swing states. But Arizona is the most dramatic example, and it's because we're the third state in the blueprint. They laid out a plan to take money from the big blue states, get them out of their primaries, stop having, you know, a hundred millions, a hundred million aside in a California gubernatorial primary, and start doing five million, 10 million aside in a California gubernatorial primary, and taking the other 180 million that they were going to spend and putting it into, first it was Colorado, and they took a red state and turned it blue, purple, red, but red. Uh, Nevada, same story, now it's Arizona. And if you look, I mean, there's just not enough money in Arizona for us to, to overcome every single race we've had.
How do we stop this from happening?
Well, legally, you, you really can't. What we need-
Wasn't that the McCain-Fingold thing that allows all that to happen?
No, actually, that's, that's, doesn't, I mean, it, any, anybody could have done this years ago. They just kind of finally came up with the idea. What we need to start doing is looking at our races where we were running big expensive primaries in places like Florida and Texas, Alabama, you know, these hardcore red states where we've got it. Stop spending money, hate beating each other up in those states and start sending it to the swing states like the Democrats do. That's what, I mean, that's our counter to it, right? The other part is to start pushing back this corporate woke-ism. And that's the real fight. That actually should be far more than abortion. If you're concerned about the future of this country, then fight corporate woke-ism. Because that's funneling huge amounts of money to our opponents.
It's crazy. It's so, it, it seems so big, the more you know about it, the more you just want to say, you know what? I'm going to get some property and come get me, I'll, I'm going to drop you.
I, I'm worried, for the first time, I'm really worried about the future of this country and how it's going to go and how, how the breakup is going to happen. And I really think it's heading to that point, that there will be a breakup at some point. And, and my question is, what's that going to look like? Is it going to be amicable? Probably not entirely, at least not entirely. So I'm, I'm concerned and, you know, I, I laugh every time I hear someone called January 6th an insurrection, because folks, I think we all know that when Republicans show, 100,000 Republicans show up to hold an insurrection.
It's going to look a lot-
It's going to look a lot different than that. The, the weapons that they are going to be charged with bringing are not sticks attached to sides.
Right.
You know, and pocket knives. Those are the, those are the weapons that, that the January 6th protesters have been charged with having.
Disingenuous, the whole thing has been disingenuous and silly. That, that's what really scares everybody, because if Trump would have said insurrect, it would have happened.
It would have happened.
Yep, because we're pissed, we're pissed.
No, we are pissed and, and understandably so. I don't blame any Republican for being this pissed, because you are being cheated. You're being cheated left and right, you're being cheated by corporate America, you're being cheated, uh, by the, by the media. Nine out of 10 movies are bashing on you. You know, everywhere you go, your viewpoint is being told, you're being told your viewpoint is hateful. Well, I mean, the viewpoint is basic, basically just, you know, I mean, it's human decency and, and avoiding this craziness of the left. I can't point to anything that's even remotely hateful in any, you know, any normal Republicans platform. You know, we're not talking about Nick Fuentes here, we're talking about human beings who, frankly, are, are very good decent human beings and they know that, and they're being treated like they are Nazis and they, they're done.
You know, it's, um, if you look at Australia and Canada, these were war- Australia, I was there when I was young and had ventured around the entire country.
I grew up near, you know, an hour and a half south of the Canadian border.
Australia was this wonderful, wild and free place.
So is Canada.
It is awful now.
They, they, I think that's what worries me the most is those two countries and what they've done and obviously-
We're headed this exact same way.
They're trying to take us the same way. They're having more of a fight back here, right?
Yeah.
And that's what worries me. I mean, that really does.
Cause they're going to fuck around and find out, you know, that, you've seen that fuck around and find out?
Absolutely right.
That's what I'm concerned, because they don't see, they don't see that-
The, the control that's holding a lot of Republicans and a lot of conservatives back from what would be an actual insurrection, which would be a much different looking thing like we've just talked about, is basically their own societal self-control and desire not to rock the boat. But that's a very brittle thing.
It's very brittle.